Would you see him as a person or just as a...
Just Jeff.
Will he be somebody you see?
All right, we are live and I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, November 1st, 2021 City Commission Study Session.
Study Session.
Oops. Am I hearing voices, my own voice in my head? There we go.
I heard it.
Well, good. Maybe I've got some mind control going in. Welcome you here to talk about the Smoky Hill River Restoration Project. And I will turn it over to Ms. Tasker.
Sure.
To go ahead and start us off then.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we're going to talk about the Section 1135 Smoky Hill River Aquatic Ecosystem Restoration Feasibility Study. From here on, let's just call it feasibility study, okay? That's easier to say. But this study really talks about a lot of activities and tasks that's been undertaken over the last three years. It's actually been three years since we signed the agreement, or will be in January, to do this study. And what we will end up with is a decision document that helps us make a decision on what the locally preferred plan is and what we'll move forward with up through the chain of command through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This feasibility study had a price tag of about, well, of $800,000, which the city paid $350,000, and the government or U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is in for the other $450,000. They pay the first $100,000, then we split from there on. And today, we have Damian Slaughter with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. He's going to talk a lot about the program and the work that's been done over the last two-plus years. And we'll probably break at the end of his presentation so that you can ask some questions. Then we'll move into a presentation by HDR. They're a subconsultant for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers doing work on the plans that they'll present later, and they are also our river renewal consultant, so they can kind of tie together the river renewal project with what it means with the plans that we're going to discuss today. And with them, we have Eric Dove and John Denlinger. And I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves as their turn comes up, so you'll be connected with them. And our real goal is, we have to determine which locally preferred plan that we want to move forward with as far as the city. So today, you're going to hear a lot of information about that. Not asking for a decision today. We then hope to go out to the public and to our advisory committee and get some input from them and bring it back to the City Commission about the middle of January to try to make that decision so that we can move forward through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers review process, which I believe Damon will give you a lot more information on that. So that's the short story, and anytime, I believe, if you have a question as we go, please feel free to jump in and ask it. You don't necessarily have to wait till the end if something's a question that'll make it easier for you to move forward. So Mike, you want to add anything?
Not at the moment. I would tell you there's been a lot of effort, a lot of detail that's gone into this, and I think there's going to be a lot of detail in this conversation, but we'll do our best to walk you through it.
All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Damon Slaughter. I am the Continuing Authority Program Manager for the Kansas City District, and I also manage the majority of the projects that fall underneath that program. Today, I'm going to give you an overview of what the Continuing Authority Program is, some of the authorities that we have within it, talk about how we progress projects through that timeline, and also with the actual schedule with this project, then dig in a little bit to the costs and some of the variables that you guys need to understand to try to make your decision on which plan that you're going to move forward with. Next slide. So the Continuing Authority Program, for civil works projects, you have to get authorization and you also have to get appropriation. The Continuing Authority Program, what it does is it gives us a continuous authority in order to go forth and do projects, they're usually small-scale projects. There's a lot of authorities, nine or so. Right here, what you see is the majority of the ones that the Corps of Engineer does, and the very bottom one is the one that we are working under. It's the Section 1135. What it is, it's modification of an existing core project, and that core project in this stance is the flood protection project that was done. We don't technically have to actually modify the project. We're just doing efforts to improve the environment, and it doesn't have to be in the actual project area. In this case, though, it's the seven-ish miles that has been cut off by the channel. Next slide. So this here, this actually kind of overall high level to explain what we do within CAP projects, shows you, we break them down into feasibility, and then we break them down into, it's actually called design and implementation, but most people understand it as design and construction, because we don't always have to construct something, we just have to implement a measure to move on. And so feasibility is done with a cost-share agreement. It's a 50-50 cost-share agreement. And then we move into design. Depending on which project you're working on, it's either a 65-35 split or a 75-25. In this case, we're working with a 75-25 split. Of that 75% that we pay, we have a limit, and that limit in this project is $10 million. And that $10 million covers from the beginning of feasibility through the end of design and implementation. And also, a note on this page you'll see is that we do not pay for O&M, so you'll see that it's listed as a zero. Next slide. All right, so here's kind of the high-level tasks on which we do to complete for almost any project that we have. It shows you what we're doing. So when you're looking at here, the bold items are the items that we've actually completed, and then everything else are items in which we'll have to do in the future. So the way we work through these projects, we first come in, we identify problems, some opportunities, constraints, and then we identify what the existing conditions are. So we have to know what the current conditions are to develop measures and alternatives to solve the current problems, and then we measure what we think the future is going to be with those alternatives to figure out what our lift is, our benefit in actually doing the project. And so we do that with the use of environmental models. We take those models to identify what it was in the beginning, what it is now, there's a certain lift, and there's a certain cost to that lift. And we take those two things, and we stick it inside a program, a tool, it's called CEICA, Cost-Effective Incremental Cost Analysis. It's a big one, I know.
Well, and I appreciate the glossary at the end of this section, because then I had to go back and write in all of, for all the acronyms.
We love our acronyms, yes. And some of them are so close, or they'll, we'll have an acronym and it's the same thing, so it's kind of weird. Anyway, so we do our CEICA, and through that process, we come out with our National Ecosystem Restoration Plan, and that's the NER. And so we've done that, we've selected that as what, in this next slide, you'll see that as alternative two. We had four alternatives, and through those four alternatives, we had two of them that were, this process tells you best buy alternatives, and it tells you cost-effective alternatives. And so we can technically do either one of those, we just can't do the ones that come out as non-cost-effective. And that was what alternative three came out of the four alternatives that we first developed. Alternative three was non-cost-effective, four and two were both best buys, and alternative one is a cost-effective alternative. So right now, we're currently at that stage. We have what we selected as the NER, and then there's the possibility of a locally preferred plan, since it's cheaper. Typically, when we do a locally preferred plan, there's always, typically, there's always a waiver process in order for us to do that. So anytime that the locally preferred plan, a sponsor says, hey, I want to do like alternative four, alternative four was a best buy, but it costs more than alternative two, this local sponsor would have to fork up and pay everything extra that was beyond alternative two to alternative four. In the case where it decreases, like an alternative one, if you select that, then it's still the same cost share. We can move forward with that, and there is no differences in the costs. Once we select it, then we have what we call the tentatively selected plan. So and then we start refining our tentatively selected plan. Through that, we finalize our cost estimate, we finalize our real estate plan, which you see that, listen, there's R E P. And then we do several different review processes, our district quality control checks. We present all of this to our district so that we have several, here's an acronym inside of an acronym. Our MDM, which is the MSC Decision Meeting, which is our Major Subordinate Command, which is our division, they're the ones that would then approve us to move forward with the project. And then once we have approval, then we can have, we have to wait for actual approval to get, sign our project partnership agreement, and that's the 75-25 split, moving forward with the project that authorizes us to move into design and implementation. I think we're good with the schedule there. That's the process that we go through. I guess you guys wanted to know about a public meeting. So once, after we get done with our MDM, that's, they authorized us to go into ATR, which is our Agency Technical Review, and at that point in time, we ask, we put our report out for public review, and then we can do a public meeting at that point in time as well.
And Mr. Slaughter, the January 22nd date that's in red on the previous slide, that's when you hope to have all of these, the LPP and the CE, or the TSP, you hope to have that all done by January of 2022?
That was the date that was provided to me.
Okay, okay.
Was when you guys would be, have selected whether or not you want to go with the locally preferred plan, alternative one.
Or two.
If that's, I'm assuming it's a locally preferred plan, I'm making that statement, but whether or not you want to go with the NER, or if you want to have a locally preferred plan and choose alternative one.
Okay.
That was the date that was selected.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Fine. Okay, so there's a lot of information is going to be on this slide. We're going to sit here for a little bit. So I went over the CEICA process, and you see alternative one is a cost-effective, and alternative two was a best buy, and it was selected as the NER. And so this is, that's the alternative that we would move forward and provide to Division for approval. And so right now, we're trying to see if you guys want to actually make a decision and use a locally preferred plan or not. So the cost that you see here, $13 million compared to the $14 million, those are dollars that are escalated out to midpoint of construction or midpoint of their activity. There's several different activities, we call them accounts, that fall within that dollar figure. That's the construction, the design, supervision and assurance, which is activities that we do during construction to ensure that everything runs smoothly, and acquisition of real estate. So all of those activities are escalated out to their midpoint based upon our current schedule, and then we get this dollar figure for the value. And then that is split out between 75 and 25. Typically, that's where we stop, because we have a 75-25 split, although in this case, you see we exceed our per-project limit. Not only does, we have to make sure we go back and confirm we had our feasibility costs that we also have to add into this. And so when you're looking at this, we have to go in and add the $450,000 federal dollars that we spent in feasibility, so that we have a complete total, what this per-project would be for the federal project is $10.7 million. So everything over that $10 million is sponsor's burden. And so you can see we're at 8% and 15%, those are kind of key numbers there. Our division, we'd have to request, according to our guidance, we have to terminate the project. However, we have written in to where we can actually request, based upon the sponsor's desire, to allow you guys to pay the value that's over the per-project limit, and then we get a waiver for that. That waiver process used to have to go all the way to headquarters, but we just, General Seminite signed a delegation authority, which now allows our division for approval of everything from 0% to 25%. So our division, who is also the same people that approve our report, now have the authority to provide us a waiver for exceeding the per-project limit. So you see now, the non-federal cost, what we do is we take all those dollars that exceeded the per-project limit, and we add that to your 25% share, and then that's your total project cost for the non-fed. Some of the things that go into that non-federal cost are different ways that you can actually pay for that non-federal cost. You've got three different ways. You can pay that with straight cash, you can pay that through your LURD, there's a nice acronym. That's lands easements, right-of-ways, disposals, and relocations costs. And you can also do what we call working kind, where during the PPA agreement, you can do various design activities if you wish, or during the construction costs, you can, construction, you can do different construction activities that we can pull out, and you guys can actually work on those. And so all three of those is what wraps up and creates your total project cost. And that's what we would put inside the PPA. So looking down at the bottom, you have the total escalated dollars, and so this is the actual figures that we would put in there. So the federal share inside of our PPA would be the $9.5 million, and then the non-federal share would be that $4.2, and then we would break it out based upon further discussions once we've selected which alternative we want to do, whether or not you're doing any working kind at all during it, or if it would just be cash and LURD values. So key things to take note, right now, Headquarters has put us on a PPA hold, and so what this means is we can move through the feasibility report, but then we can't sign a PPA. They don't authorize us to move into the design and implementation. There's some lack of funding, and so they don't want to start projects that we can't finish, and so they're holding things off. And so that's something of importance, I assume, for you guys' schedule and moving forward is to understand that. Some other things that are coming out is, there's WADA 2022. This is an assumption at this point in time, but we're anticipating, hoping, looking forward to the WADA 2022 increasing the per-project limit for our projects. They've been at the point they're at now for a while. We've had a lot of push to help to try to get that up, and we're just waiting to see. Now, that won't occur until December 2022, and so that's kind of a schedule, keeping ensuring you understand how far along that that would have to push out the project.
Is there a proposed increase amount that?
I do not know.
Anticipated, so you don't know if that's going to rise to 15 million?
We were looking forward to happen in 2020, and it didn't happen in 2020.
Gotcha.
So at this point, it's unknown.
When was the PPA program put on hold?
What I can tell you is I have a project right now that has been on hold for a year and a half.
So for the last year and a half, there's been PPA money or used for projects that were already approved, but no new ones in the last year and a half?
Correct. Now, to shite a little bit of light on that, I was asked whether or not, if I could receive some funds and execute for that project, could I? And I asked the question to Headquarters, are you lifting the PPA hold? And they did not state yes or no, they just asked whether or not I could or not if they lifted it. So there is some promise that the PPA hold may be lifted, but it's for, but I don't know what the guidance is going to be on that. One of the things that we're really looking forward is to the bipartisan infrastructure bill that's coming out, because the guidance, or the version that was published, I think it was July timeframe that was approved by the Senate, it had language in there that eliminated the per-project limits. So when you, that's telling us there is no PPA hold, and I don't have to worry about my $10 million limit. All I do is I go back to that initial numbers up top, 75-25, and then that would be our split. What's going to come out in the final version, I do not know. All I know is what was in the approved version from Senate.
So the PPA was put on hold because they're basically out of dollars?
Exactly. They're using the funds that we currently have to finish projects.
Okay.
And they didn't want to start new projects until we were getting the bottleneck out of the way.
And you did say that there are dollars earmarked for this program in the infrastructure bill? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
So the way the infrastructure bill was written, it said $465 million, and then it listed out the authorities, and this was one of the authorities that was listed in there that the money could go to. It wasn't specific, there wasn't any money specifically set for 1135, but 1135 was one of the authorities that was listed to, that we could, that the Headquarters Corps of Engineers was authorized to put money towards.
And you said that was 465 million?
That's what's in the approved, the version of the Senate bill that was passed, of the infrastructure bill, I think it was in July.
And if you don't have an answer to this, I understand, but do you know how many, how many dollars are already in the queue for that 465 million?
I do not know, because right now, that is not official. There's no past, signed into law version of that, and so...
But you don't have any programs that have already applied that are sitting there waiting on this to hold to come off? Yes, or?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was wondering if, you know, when the hold does come off, if there are like, you know, 20 projects ahead of us, then that would further, yeah, push back our timeframe as well.
So what I would tell you is, we're only one district within our division of multiple divisions, and everybody's looking at this infrastructure bill going, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And the number that was in the approved version was 465 million. What's going to be in the final version? I don't know. It may be more, it may be less.
Do you know how that 465 number compares to past application?
That 465, okay, so I told you about the per-project limit of $10 million. So what we also have is an annual limit. I'm not going to be able to tell you what that number is, but we have an annual limit for each authority that we can spend. And this $465 million exceeds every single one of those added up by $83 million. So this would be the most, if that number was the final number, it would be the most money the Corps of Engineers has ever received for CAP in one year. And if it's, however, I don't know what the implementation guidance is going to look like. All it said was, here's your money, and then Headquarters will decide how that money is actually implemented. So currently, we're operating underneath a CRA, the Continuing Resolution, which means we really don't have a lot of money to move forward on. We're waiting for our typical appropriations through the energy and water appropriations to see what comes out of that. There's a couple of different versions that have come out, they're in committee trying to work that out. That normal process does not show very much funds at all for the Continuing Authority Program, so there's not a lot there. Other ways that we could receive funding would be supplemental. Supplemental does not happen very often, so I wouldn't look too hard onto that one. And something else that I want you to understand is that if we get funded, and we're not funded through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which waives the per-project limit, and we still have to pay attention to our per-project limit, any increases during feasibility or any increases during, let me back up, any increases, once we get into design and implementation, would be 100% sponsor's burden. Because once we sign, we signed that PPA, we've already exceeded our limit, you guys have already paid over, therefore, if there is a site condition change, we have to do a modification to the contract for any reason, that, that cost, that additional cost would be completely on, on the sponsor.
So we don't want to get in too big of a hurry to be signing anything until we actually know what the maximum could be? Is that, is that what I'm understanding? Or...
So there's, there's several different...
I mean, I guess there's cost benefits either way in terms of putting up...
Absolutely. We'll go to the next slide. So there's a couple of different courses of action in moving forward with this. Some of the, this infrastructure bill, where, I mean, you guys are going to know when it's passed as soon as I'm going to know it when it's passed. You might, you might know sooner. I don't like to look at the news too often, but, so, you know, we're all going to know when it's passed at the same time. The implementation guidance thereof is what we're going to have to wait on to see what happens. On exactly how we're going to receive those funds, which projects are going to receive those funds, and what's the criteria in order to receive those funds? Is the criteria going to be, you have to have a report approved, you have to have a PPA signed by a certain date, do you have to have construction done by a certain date, or at least awarded by a certain date? Those are some of the criteria that could be placed upon the funds. I just don't know what they are at this time, and we won't know until it's provided to us. But we're assuming that's going to come out December, but that is an assumption, at least by December. So looking at that, that's kind of the same timeframe you guys are looking forward, moving forward to making your actual decisions. So by the time you make your decision, we may know of some of the funds, but I don't know if I'll know the implementation guidance for those funds. So if we move forward, you guys make your determination, whichever alternative we wish, and then we move forward and submit that to Division. Right now, we just got to understand that, as of right now, there is a per-project limit. We'd have to get a waiver. If you select a locally preferred plan, there would have to be a waiver. Both of those waivers are done at Division. Division is also the ones that approves the actual feasibility report. So there's no additional, hey, let's go, it's approved here, and now we got to go to the next level up to get it approved. It's all, if they approve the report, then they're going to approve the limits, and they're going to approve the other waiver as well. So that moves into, we move this forward, are we going to get the bipartisan infrastructure bill? Is it going to pay for things? Is it going to waive these per-project limits? Even if it waives the per-project limit, we're still going to have, possibly, depending on which project you select, the waiver for the locally preferred plan. There's also the option of delaying, delaying, and possibly, WADA will increase the per-project limit. If it increases the per-project limit, then your cost share will be different. It'll go back to that first number that was at the top of the screen of that sheet, not the one that was at the bottom. And we don't have to have to go through the actual waiver process for that as well. Another option is, we back up. We go back into feasibility, we look for different ways of reducing cost for construction. In order to do that, you're going to have to spend more money. When we spend more money on feasibility, we're reducing the amount of money we have in design to move forward, and which then possibly increasing the amount of the cost share that you guys have as well. Another option is what we talked about earlier, about working kind, finding some different ways to, that you guys can do work, just to within reduce your cash contribution. Other options, terminate. Terminate would be three different things. Terminate and walk away, you guys do everything on your own. Terminate, there is this possibility of switching over to a Section 206. A Section 206 is an ecosystem restoration, aquatic ecosystem restoration project, it was listed in the first page. The reason we brought that up is there's language, again, in the current version of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that gave 115 of that $465 million directly to 206 projects that removed impediments in the stream. There is an impediment in the stream that we are removing for this project. Again, I don't know what the implementation guidance would be on this or not. This would be a high-risk, high-payoff move. But I would stress, high risk, because right now, you have an authorization. Your authorization is in Section 1135 or moving forward. If you terminate and try to go to a 206, you get rid of that authorization, and now you're back in the queue trying to request a new project for a 206. And then you get your, your funding with it as well. So that's where I say it's high risk, but then it would be high payoff if that language still holds true moving forward with the version that is actually approved. if that language still holds true moving forward with the version that is actually approved. Because the language says, "Fully federally funded." Now, again, I don't know what the implementation guidance would be on that, whether they say only for ones that are currently feasibility, that are currently feasibility reports being processed, or that they're done, that you already have a PPA signed by X date, or again, construction signed by X date. There's, there's a lot of unknown variables in this that should surface within the next few months. The other possibility on there is convert, is to terminate the project and convert it to a GI study. This is kind of the same way. You're getting rid of your authorization. Now, you have to go to Congress for actual authorization instead of going to our headquarters for authorization. You're going to Congress to ask for the project, and then you're going to Congress again to ask for appropriations, the actual funding for it. So, this is another, it's a possibility, you can do it. What it, what it does for you is it eliminates that per-project limit, but it also converts, changes your cost share agreement. You go from a 75-25 to a 65-35, which is, if in actuality, where you would be if you went with Alternative 2, is a 65-35. So, here's what I want to leave you with. We do these projects in two phases. Feasibility, design, and implementation. The things that you guys have to answer is schedule and cost. Are they acceptable? Not that you really like them, because nobody likes an expensive project, but are they acceptable to move forward? And which, which project are they acceptable to moving forward with, based upon all the different variables that I've explained to you? Locally preferred plan. If you move forward with that one, it's a waiver. You have to get a waiver for it. Per-project limit, again, we, right now, as it sits, we have to get a waiver. But ways that we go around that is the bipartisan infrastructure bill, maybe. Will it waive all the, the per-project limits on it? And will this project be funded underneath it? Or waiting for WADA? WADA possibly could increase the per-project limit. If we get a feasibility report approved, we move into design and implementation. Again, as it stands now, there is a PPA hold. How different ways of moving past the PPA hold? Getting funding through our normal, our normal process, the Energy and Water Appropriations, a supplemental, or the bipartisan infrastructure deal. All of these things have different timings in which they occur. And you've got to understand where you want that to fit in, and how long you can hold out for different funding. And then also understanding that if we move forward without, underneath a per-project limit, any additional costs would be your burden. That is all I came here to present to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Any, any questions from the Commission for Mr. Slaughter? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Are you able to find that next PowerPoint? Wonderful. All right. While your head's swimming yet? There's a lot of acronyms and a lot of options moving forward. So, my name's Eric Dev with HDR. I'm a water resources engineer, about 28 years of experience. And I've been the project manager for the city-led portion, and also working on the technical details behind 1135. And my goal with 1135 is really to make sure we're aligned, that the 1135 process is furthering the master plan goals that the community worked so hard on. So, I want to go through today, talk about these alternatives, one and two, and what the differences are. Kind of what are you getting when you buy one of these? And then John's going to follow up, and we'll talk a little bit about some options moving forward, both under that 1135, what that looks like, and some potential advantages to a few different approaches. So, go ahead. Keep on going. One more. And I apologize, we couldn't use the clicker. All right, so this is a graphic we've shown before. And in blue, these are the areas that 1135 would qualify for. And in green are the items that we've always envisioned a different funding source as needed. And our goal all the way along is we don't use city money directly. We use city money as a cost match to further our dollars. The master plan identified roughly 85 million in improvements, and we knew we didn't have enough money to do all that. So, working with the community, we not only prioritize what we wanted to build, but we also wanted to look for funding sources. And so, one of them is the 1135 program. And so, the 1135 will cover the entrance works, get the water through the levee, and then it's going to cover the sediment excavation and the disposal of that sediment, channel shaping, bank stability, and vegetation management. So, that's common with all the alternatives we looked at. And then the construction cost share is if we stay below that 10 million cap, or that cap is raised in the future. And right now, the Corps is on hold. They're looking to the community to see if you have a locally preferred plan selection. So, that's really what we want to talk about, and talk a little bit more about. Is there a locally preferred plan versus what the Corps calls the best buy? And best buy, to me, is always a strange way to, to call it. So, my, my example is if you go to Sam's, you can buy a huge container. It's really expensive, but the per ounce cost is less. Well, this is what we're doing when we say the best buy. So, it's a more expensive plan, but you get more habitat credits per dollar. So, in the ecosystem world, it's a best buy because we get more habitat credits per cost, and that's why it's the best value. The nomenclature's a little strange. Go ahead. All right, so when we met with the community, the community's number one goal is let's get the water flowing. So, when we entered the 1135, that, in fact, was our priority, is to get the water flowing. The next group of goals all deal with access, either through walkways, trails, bridges. And so, that then became what we want to add to it. So, let's walk into each element of the master plan and see what that looks like. Go ahead. So, alternative one is really focused at a, at the lower-cost option to get the water flowing. Starting on the right, the uphill side in Bill Burke Park, there will be an automated set of gates to let the water in. And then immediately behind that, there would be the sedimentation pond. And then we start flowing water down through Bill Burke Park. The 1135 program will remove culverts, remove impediments, but they will not build new impediments back. So, South Ohio, for instance, is totally filled with sediment. The Corps' program will remove that culvert and will pay for the utility relocations needed. But then the city funds will be needed to put a new structure back and put the lanes back. So, here in just a little bit, I'll show you the city's cost to support the Corps' program to make sure that we can continue moving traffic through. Moving down through the YMCA corridor, there'd be more excavation. And then we tie into the existing culverts at YMCA, the Midway. We use the existing bridges down through the parks. And then we daylight right around the Mulberry Bridge. So, alternative one and two, that's kind of the length that we're looking at. So, it's always upstream of Iron. Go ahead. In general, what this alternative one is, is a fairly uniformed channel just to get the water flowing downhill. So, what I show on the screen is a pretty typical section, the dashed line. That's the existing channel bottom. That's what the sediment filled in, generally dried during the summer. And then we'd excavate, it's anywhere to up to seven feet of sediment that's accumulated. And we end up with a water depth around three and a half feet. The top width is roughly 40 to 80 feet of water. So, it's a sizable channel. It, it really is. And then the, the bottom, underneath, underneath the water, is a five foot. So, it is flowing, it is wide. So, it accomplishes that master plan goal of a flowing channel. At the upstream end on the right, I show enlargement of what this entrance works will consist of. In the master plan, that was envisioned to be maybe a concrete-lined channel, a swimming pool, basically. Going through a value engineering, we identified we could do a much larger, open pond, essentially. And that would have better sediment capture and be easier on the construction cost front end. And then to facilitate maintenance, we put a boat ramp in. So, that would be a place, if you wanted to go fish with the kids, you would have access to that location. And it would sit behind a gate system so that when the floods came, the gates could be raised and keep the floodwaters out of that facility. The last thing we want is the Smokie River to flood it and fill up with sediment. So, coming out of this facility, the water will be much cleaner. It will reduce your downstream maintenance cost. So, once we excavate the sediment, the sediment stays out. Go ahead. And this will continue down through Bill Burke, on alignment with the master plan. As we turn the corner and come into South Ohio, on the west side of South Ohio is where we proposed a canoe and kayak launch. So, the Corps' program won't build that. And, but it will, like I said, remove the culvert, but then the city funds would have to be expended to put the street back. We then continue downstream of there, all the way past YMCA, using the existing culverts, and all the way through and daylighting at Mulberry. And then what I show on the south edge of the screen here, that would be Iron Street. And so, right now, Western Star Mill Dam is in bad shape. That would take out, this program would take out that dam and replace it with the step pools. So, these are shorter rock weirs. And during the master planning process, we wanted to make sure that'd be navigable by canoes and kayaks. Go ahead.
So, Eric, when you refer to daylighting at Mulberry, in my mind's eye, I hear enclosed culvert until it comes out of the culvert at Mulberry. Could you clarify, please?
Sure. So, that excavation, that, anywhere from three to seven feet of excavation. Mulberry sits pretty high and backs water up. The, the Western Star Mill Dam backs water up. So, we keep digging until we can get water to flow downhill. And we end the excavation right around Mulberry. So, we daylight our excavated channel under the water at Mulberry.
But the water's exposed to view and the daylight.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, great question. Thank you.
And the renderings that we see here, I mean, obviously, they include the trails. And that's not something that we're going to be able to do in, in this initial project scope, or is it?
Right.
We're not?
We will not be able to do that. Now, we will need haul roads. And so, we'd like to orientate those haul roads to align where the future trails would be. But this program won't specifically pay for recreational amenities like trails. All right, so this is the rendering from the master plan down in that Founder's, excuse me, down in Founder's Park. This is where Western Star Mill currently sits. And you can start to see these rock weirs, and then the deeper water in the mill to allow canoe kayaks. So, the trail you see on the left would not be built with Corps money or the pedestrian trail going over. So, it's really focused on sediment removals and taking out Western Star Mill and putting a new stable structure. Does that kind of make sense? And these were the imagery we showed during the master plan, just to make sure we can get canoes and kayaks through there. So, these are called canoe shoots, or sometimes canoe slides. But it would be built out of rock, and it would be navigable. Go ahead. Now, when we excavate this material, we need to find somewhere closed to dispose of it, to lower the cost. So, at Lakewood Lake, historically, if you go back to the newspaper articles, to firsthand accounts, before the levee was built, when this was a flowing channel, Lakewood Lake used to be much deeper, on the order of six feet deeper. The Discovery Channel, people remember jumping off that dock and into deep water. If you did that now, you'd land on mud. So, what we're going to do with that sediment is we're going to place it to create a trail network within that south side. So, as that water comes up, like we think it will, as we restore the channel, we're going to restore the lake level. So, the trail network you see is mostly the fill that we'd excavate from the channel. We'd get that up higher and drier. That was a request from the parks, because the trail system through there sits so low. The parks really has a hard time maintaining those trails. And so, by creatively using this sediment to a beneficial use, then we can make that south end of the lake a much more interesting and much more maintainable place to be. Also, one thing that we're doing here is wetland mitigation. So, what we do is we pull this sediment in, and we anticipate that level of the lake coming up, and put it in a way that benefits the ecosystem. And then we're also going to connect the channel to the lake. So, there's a, several ecosystem benefits to that for aquatic, deep-water habitat, as well as just cleaning the water with that wetland system. But also, we don't have to pay for wetland mitigation. One of the things that 2010 master plan identified is if you went forward with that plan, you would have had millions of dollars of wetland mitigation to do. And basically, what that is, is if you impact, let's say, two acres of wetland, you would have had to create four to five acres of wetlands somewhere else. What's typically done is you buy into a bank. The cost is anywhere from $30,000 to, let's say, $50,000 an acre to buy into that bank. So, it's just a cost to the project. There is no benefit to the project. It's money out the door. But by going through the feasibility study, we've identified a way that we can self-mitigate. So, we create as many wetlands as we impact. We have a net benefit to our ecology. What that means to the city is that you're going to save about $1.7 million on this part because we don't have to do off-site wetland mitigation. So, the cost to the city was about $350,000 for this study. So, even if we received no additional funding, we would have saved $1.7 million. So, right now, it's still a very good value. This is a good way to go right now. And this is what we showed from the master plan. And with this system, we'd have trails, and we'd also start to set up that canoe discovery trail. On this image, where you see those wetlands, that would be excavated sediment that we'd imported into this area. The blue water will be that new higher level of Lakewood Lake. So, we can creatively choose how we want to do that to create our Blue Way trails and start setting up that master plan. Go ahead. All right, so alternative two is going to look amazingly similar. It has all the similar aspects on the entrance works, has all the similar aspects, how we're going to mitigate wetlands. But the biggest difference is we start to approach what a natural channel would look like. A natural channel has shallower sections called riffles and slightly deeper sections called pools. In this map, we've color-coded where the pools, riffles, and runs are. And that follows a natural channel pattern. Go ahead, next. So, here's our typical section for these. So, what you're going to find is a shallower section on the straightaways, in between the two bends, like a natural channel, roughly three feet deep. And then it's going to go into a deeper section for the pools, on the order of four to six feet deep. So, instead of having a fairly uniformed channel that we're excavating, now this is going to go up and down, just like a natural channel would. To do this, it will take more excavation. And so, the roughly $1 million in cost, you saw a difference between alternative one and two. That's where it's at. How much do we want to excavate? Go ahead, next. And this was from the master plan. When we designed these channels, we always designed with sediment transport in mind to minimize your long-term maintenance. And by excavating more now under a cost-share agreement, it minimizes your future maintenance. Also, with the intent of the master plan, everyone talked about a naturalized channel. I think this gets us closer to the master plan goals of a naturalized channel. Go ahead, next. Now, the difference isn't a lot. This table, on the left, I've got alternative one and two top width. So, like at South Ohio, the top width of alternative one is 45, and the top width of alternative two is 48. So, you can see it's just a little bit wider. And that's a similar pattern all the way down. You see the alternative two just a little bit wider. And then on the next two, the, the two columns on the right, alternative one and two, now we show the depth. And the depth goes up and down. If you notice, sometimes alternative two is deeper, sometimes it's shallower. And that's because we're starting this up and down for the natural channel system. You can still see, this is a substantial channel, a lot of water, and a lot of top width. And it is really targeted to meeting those community goals of let's get a clean, flowing water system in there. Go ahead, next. All right, so I hate to do this to you. Here's more numbers. Okay. So I mentioned that the Corps program is geared toward ecosystem. It won't put bridges back, it won't put roads back, it won't put culverts back. So for the city's projects, we need to build a pedestrian culvert on North Ohio. And that's because as we open up South Ohio, we're going to steer more water downstream. So we want to make sure it efficiently moves through the city's system. And so the pedestrian culvert at North Ohio is to minimize impacts to the theater, because the theater has that really low basement level. And then for South Ohio, we need to put that street back. And so there's roughly $800,000 in costs. And so when you add it up, it's roughly 1.8 million is what the city's costs are on top of the Corps cost. So at the end of the day, we keep traffic moving that we take care of our flood control needs. Go ahead. All right, so for program costs now, if you put the two together, so 1135 cost share, so that would be the Corps' costs along the top. The Corps is capped at 10 million. So they already spent 450 on the feasibility studies, so 9.55 million is what they have. And then the city's cost share for alternative one is at 4.2 that Damon showed. Plus, you have to put, like, South Ohio back, so it's 1.8. So you're going to be spending roughly 6 million to the Corps' 9.5 million. So with the city's bonding budget currently at 13.5 million, so when you bond the project, 13.5 is what your project costs that you can pay for. Subtract 13.5 from that 6, you get 7.4 is what we can use on our Phase One amenities. See how that all breaks down? Okay, next. So alternative two, same way. Now, the city will have to pick up more of the costs. So it leaves a little bit less for the Phase One amenities. So it drops by roughly a million, 6.4 million. All right. Now, I promise I'm almost done with numbers. So when we went out to the community, we asked prioritized, where should we spend our money first? What were those key goals? They came back, definitely get the water flowing. But then after that, we asked even further, where would you spend the money after the water's flowing? And everyone, all the surveys, all really pointed to that Iron Street area. And then just south of Iron on the west side, this Fourth Plaza area is some of the key areas, really to tie in with the downtown streetscape that was done, that looks magnificent, and also captures some of the visitor traffic coming in. So if we look at a potential Phase One elements, these are the ones that start to lay out that would align with the community's goals. So about a quarter of Fourth Street Plaza, Iron Street Bridge, which would be attached to that. And then we have, when we remove iron, we also take care of ash and elm bridges, same time. We want to make sure there's not trash flowing in the creek. So there's a trash collector, a floating trash collector called a bandalog, we'd recommend. And then we also want to get a trail network in there. So we can do a kind of a scaled back trail system that utilizes a lot of existing paving, connects the dots essentially, and that's around 750,000. But with this trail, you would be able to bike iron all the way up through Bill Burke and tie into the levee system. So we'd complete that corridor. So down in the bottom, in the blue and the manila, so if we did these potential Phase One elements, under alternative one, the cost would be 7.4 available and maximum available if we did alternative two is at a million less. So then the shortage would be the costs I show at the bottom. So that would be a potential fundraising activity or looking for other sources of grants or funds if we wanted to make this the Phase One elements. And what I'm trying to do is find a complete succinct project that marries up the 1135 but also gets the amenities that the community really identified and thought were high priorities. So I will say we're close, but there is a shortfall of roughly that 2 million. Now, it gets really interesting if that cap limit changes. If the per-project limit changes, because we were about a million or two over, all of a sudden, those numbers almost go away. And there's also options within that lands and easements that we can talk about. But that, the value of those count the same as cash, depending how you work out the administrative costs versus the easement costs.
You might touch on our land contribution to the project?
So right now, it's estimated that this LURD, this lands, easements, and real estate count roughly towards 2.5 million of your cost match. Now, there's options on that. You could have the Corps go get the rest of the land rights, and you could just pay the cash. But the way it's set up now is that the city will go get the rest of the land rights. And there is a auditing process where the value of that land is assessed by the Corps and the Corps will assign a value to it. And so that value counts the same as the cash. There's also administrative costs and works in kind that would count the same as cash. So it reduces your out-of-pocket costs. But in a lot of ways, it's a cost. So we'll have to see how that breaks down. So right now, these numbers, I've shown it as a cost and not a true credit. I don't know, Mike, does that?
Yeah, we own quite a bit of property along the corridor, so I didn't know how that contributed as well.
And I can let your honor, Damon, talk more about it. But right now, the Corps has a process where they evaluate the land that you own. Right now, it's estimated $3,000 an acre. And they just use that as kind of a holding place until the true assessments are done. And then through this next process, after the locally preferred plan is identified, they'll go and start looking at that in more detail. So we'll have a more definitive number. But right now, it's just estimated at a value of 2.5 million. And that includes the city's cost for relocating utilities. On South Ohio, there's a large central pump station we have to move. And so that's the majority of the utility relocation cost.
Guess I'll look at staff. What's our current balance that we've collected through the sales tax for the, that we're holding for the river project?
Yeah, I'll look to Martha and Debbie both in terms of the balance, as well as the projections.
Currently, what we've estimated through 2021, the balance is about $1.3 million.
And approximately how much, a quarter are we capturing?
We promised that we would set aside $1.3 million a year because that was the funding that we were using for Kenwood Cove.
So that's a minimum, 1.3?
Yes.
Okay.
You may recall, we had a conversation to kind of walk through those projections in terms of design costs and debt financing and getting to that project cost number that Eric referenced earlier. So we're trying to tie back together our projections to the numbers that are presented to you today.
I do have a question for Mr. Dove.
No, go ahead.
I did not mean to jump in. In terms of the two different channel designs, either for Martha or Mr. Dove, is the flowing channel or the pools and riffles preferable for, like, sports and activities, whether that looks like fishing or kayaking? Is there one that offers more benefit to the citizens actually being able to use the river channel?
Yeah, so the, quite simply, the more sediment you remove, the better off you are.
Right.
So there is an aquatic habitat value that was assigned. And so the alternative two has more aquatic value based on habitat. But so if you want to fish, or you want to recreate, or you want to be by the water, alternative two is going to look more like a natural channel. It's going to function longer with needing less maintenance.
And that was my next follow-up question. Is there one design or the other that's going to take less O and M in the future?
Yeah, alternative two, since we removed so much of the sediment, we won't have to go back as soon to excavate it again. So it's going to reduce your near-term O and M costs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
That was my next question.
For Mr. Dove? Okay, thank you.
Great questions, by the way. Thank you for asking. Let me have John come up and start talking about some potential options moving forward.
Thank you, Eric, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I won't be nearly as detailed or long as what you've listened to so far. So really, what I'm trying to do is tie the two discussion points together for you as best I can today. So my background, I'm also a Water Resources engineer, Water Resources planner. I manage our federal water practice out of HDR's Kansas City Office. So a lot of experience in trying to bring together local sponsor needs with federal programs that are available. And the 1135 really is a very good fit for what we're trying to do here. As you can see, there are some hurdles still to clear. There's a process that we're going through. But I want to try and bring that all together for you today, and then we can talk some more. Eric's got a few other tricks up his sleeve on some potential funding sources outside of 1135. So again, the Corps of Engineers funding process, you heard from Damon earlier, the 1135. New agreements are currently on hold. It's an indefinite hold, so we're waiting to learn more about when that hold might be lifted. The good thing is, the agreement that's off there on the right-hand side of the screen has already been signed that takes you through feasibility. So we can get that far. When we get to the end of feasibility, that's where that agreement comes into play. So again, 1135 is a part of what Damon described. It's the continuing authorities program. So it's a continuing authority, not necessarily continuing appropriations, right? So we're always subject to the annual funding appropriations that have historically always come through the Energy and Water Bill that comes through annually in that federal funding process. As you've heard earlier, there's really some potential big changes, ground movers and things through the infrastructure bill. We're all tracking that, watching the news, and hoping for the best there, especially as it pertains to this project. Again, there's been limited amount of funding to advance a lot of these continuing authorities programs. And so that's why that hold is there. This could really break a lot loose. So we're tracking that as closely as we can. And then, again, Eric's going to talk here in a minute about some other potential funding sources. You already heard from Damon about the 206 program with the Corps, the general investigations programs. Just a reminder, those were noted as a bit risky, you know, and also having to back step to feasibility and work through that process again. So we're making good strides with the 1135. You heard about the mitigation work that was able to be accomplished through 1135, saving some money there. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On the annual funding appropriations, that means if we're approved for the 10 million, that's approved. It doesn't have to be, the appropriations doesn't happen every year to renew our portion of that 10 million?
It depends. I've seen projects go both ways. Many times, they are incrementally funded. I have seen other projects that are funded fully in one fell swoop through, yeah.
How would we? That brings up a whole new question, if it's annual appropriations required.
And you could skip a year. You could be moving through and then not get a year, and then get a year. So you could end up skipping a year. So...
Yeah, if I could ask you to step to the podium, Eric, I'd appreciate it so that the folks at home can hear you.
I worked on one project with the Corps in Lincoln, Nebraska, a similar waterfront project. And so every year, you had to get your appropriation. And so the construction contract essentially was broken into phases, where every phase was about a year. And so as that contractor started finishing up that phase, they'd bid out the next phase. Well, that contractor already on site, obviously didn't have to mobilize, so he generally would win the next bid and keep on moving. But one particular year, it was election year, they did not get funded. So that contractor demobbed and then had to wait a year, and then bid, won the job, and then remobbed. So when we work on these projects, we always want to look at different alternatives to move forward and how we keep these various pieces moving. And that's one of the things that I've looked at. So like a bridge, if we want to build Iron Street Bridge, we want to build that in the dry. We want to build that before the Corps constructs their project. And so we do have elements we can move ahead of the Corps' process. So when the Corps' process does initiate it, if something gets offset a year or the funding isn't in one fatal swoop, like John talked about, we do have elements that move forward and we can keep the project going forward. So anyway...
So if we're approved for an 1135 program, and let's say the maximum's 10 million, and that's what we're awarded, are we guaranteed to receive that 10 million even though it takes multiple years? Are we guaranteed?
So the way we get funded is quarterly. In the beginning of the year, we tell headquarters how much we're going to execute for that year. And then that's the amount of money that they give us based upon what we tell them we want. And then they give it to us quarterly, in which we're going to be able to expend that funds. So in this instance, design is a year. We'll just say, design is a year, construction is a year. So we're not given the entire amount that the PPA was signed for. We're given what we're going to execute for that year, usually through design. And then we're giving the construction funds whenever we ask for it, which is usually the following year. So that's kind of how we're funded. Does that answer your question?
I guess my real question is, if you're approved for 10 million, you will receive the 10 million?
Once we sign the PPA,
Right.
the full funds in which we've said, I have not seen a project that didn't get fully funded throughout, to complete the project.
If I could ask just a related question. If funding was interrupted, just say, year three, but the city chose to continue construction, can monies the next year be used to reimburse the city? You know, it's still the original project, just that we funded the money the year that we didn't get the appropriation.
So I'm trying to understand exactly the question.
If we were in the scenario where funds were not approved every year consecutively, if the city were to use its own money from someplace else to keep their project going, could the funds the next year be used to reimburse?
So what I'm, you're describing, and I'm going to get the two terms confused here. But there's contributed funds, and then there's, I think it's accelerated funds. There's two different terms for that. So once we've signed an agreement of PPA, there are different mechanisms that we can use that say, federal funds just don't show up. Then there is ways to where the sponsor, if they have the cash, will provide additional funds beyond their cost share that would be the normal federal cost-share funds that then later on could. But the thing that comes into is there's always this stipulation that we put in there that you may not get refunded. But, and I have not done one of those agreements before, but that's the way it's written. So there's contributed and there's accelerated. And I can provide you some of that information. I just don't have that on me right now. But there are mecha- But there are mechanisms for that. Right now, that's why we're on a PPA hold, is we've had too many. We have a bunch in there. We're trying to fund them all to get them out of the way so that we can move forward, and we don't have any issues, and we can continue to fund our projects throughout completion. And this project, there's design, year-ish, construction isn't expected to go over much of a year. So that funding problem there, not, once we get told, here you go, sign your PPA, the funding's going to be there.
Thank you.
So just to wrap up, I guess, where we are with 1135, and then we'll get on to some of these other funding sources quickly. So of course, we're here at our commission update today. We've talked about looking to schedule a public workshop in the very near future so that we can get to that locally preferred plan, whether that be the Corps' Natural Ecosystem Restoration Plan or something else. So alternative one or alternative two. Once that locally preferred plan has been identified, the feasibility study can be completed. We're projecting about 12 months to complete the feasibility study. Right in the middle of that process is what Damon described earlier as the Corps' public meeting. That is a requirement of the NEPA process that's embedded in the feasibility study. And then at the end of the feasibility study process, there is where we have the project partnership agreement that, again, is currently on hold. By the time we get there, hopefully, it will be lifted. But that's, again, something we're tracking right now. You'll see that there is no additional project partnership agreement beyond, as you move from design into construction. So there's really just one more PPA hurdle to clear, as far as that's concerned. So with that, I'm going to have Eric talk about some other funding sources.
Thank you.
So this may not be a fair question. If we could back up one slide. How do we, assuming that we clear the PPA hold hurdle, how do we assess our competitiveness to ultimately get an agreement in place when the time comes? Say that again. So assuming that somewhere out in the future, are the timing aligned such that we get through our process and there's no longer a hold on agreements? How do we assess our competitiveness to, for funds to be available and for our project to be successful and get an agreement in place?
So that's a process that we go through. We have what are called a scarcity index, and we mark those. Each one of our projects has this listed out there, the ecosystem restoration projects. Right now, this one is listed as one of the highest scarcity index that we have. And so it's, and then we take these projects, we put them in with Division, they rank them, and then we put it into, that goes to Headquarters for their ranking. As far as what you can do?
Talk offline?
So which one scores better? If we, alternative one or alternative two? If the community went in with alternative two, would it be better to receive funding?
Alternative two. Yes. Alternative two would be, has the most benefit for the environment it has, which is the objective of this project. So it's the one that has the biggest bankroll buck.
That's good to know, too. Thank you.
Great question, by the way. And it's one we try to track, and it's hard to know because it is a national program. So, good question. Earlier, we visited with, one of the other funding opportunities that comes out every year, and this has changed names, I think with every administration, was called a Tiger Grant or a Build Grant. Last year, it was called a Raze Grant, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. So every year, they'll come out with a different acronym. But this is coming through the Transportation Department. And so when we look at our master plan, some of the biggest lifts are the bridges. If we can get the bridges taken care of, we can get canoes and kayaks in. If we get the bridges taken care of, now our greenway trails are much, much easier. So one of the key elements is getting those bridges taken care of. And that's exactly what this grant funding is geared toward, is transportation improvements. We looked how the community might fare with this project. And this particular year, it had a lot to do with equity. And when we look at impacted communities, Salina would rank really well, the way this program was geared last year. Now, every year, they come out with a different grant application. We'll see that new grant application in April, and then the grant is actually due in July. And then you'll hear back typically February. So that's that funding cycle. So this is one of the grants I would strongly recommend applying for. There is technically a zero-cost match on these, but the greater your cost match, the better you score. So when I think through the infrastructure bill and who might be getting funding, now I'm starting to think through this program. This program has been well-funded in the past, $1 billion in funding last year. So if the infrastructure bill goes through, this is another area I really recommend we look at. And with that persistent poverty considerations and the proximity of the Smoky Hill River, I would anticipate that also would go forward into this next year and be a strong consideration.
How many bridges are we talking about? Iron Street? Are we talking about South Ohio? Were we doing like the culvert and some sort of different structure above?
Yeah, so it's seven total.
Seven, okay. And if we were applying for one of these Raze Grants, do you apply for each bridge individually? Or do you build a package together of multiple bridges?
I would do the complete package.
Okay.
Usually, it's about a $30 million cap.
Okay.
And so I would go for the complete package. There is a transportation benefit-to-cost ratio we'll have to fill out. And so doing the complete package typically scores a little bit better. There's some economy of scale, also some net economic lift that you'd see with a complete package. All right. And we anticipate this next year, we'll have a similar areas of persistent poverty, equity consideration. They go off the latest census data. And right now, the areas I have circled, two, three, and five, would all meet the Transportation's Department definition. And then you can see the proximity to the Riverwalk. So we, I listed out that calendar, the April '22, and then the early 2023 notice. So when you start to play out the timeline, that infrastructure bill going through, the locally preferred plan, when we'd sign the agreement, if we could then tie it with this application, it'd be a really strong application. And the timeline works right along with the Corps timeline. All right, next. Kansas also has received additional funding into the KDOT process. So they are rolling out their new round of funding, also geared towards our transportation projects. But we could go this way. The city did receive a small grant for the trail, but these programs can pay for other things like bridges. And this is a construction reimbursement program. So you would have to pay the funds out of pocket, and then KDOT would reimburse. So a little different than the program that you were in last time. Go ahead, next. And for the KDOT program, they're looking at a 15% local match. So still pretty attractive down in that 15%. They will have a similar benefit-to-cost that you'd want to look at for transportation. So it'd have some of the similar requirements that a Raze Grant would be, or whatever they call it this next upcoming year. So I think the one, those two will play off each other. I think if you complete one, you complete them all. And John said on the way down, we want to put as many lines in the water as we can to try to better our chances for additional funding, to really leverage those city dollars so the city doesn't have to build projects without a cost share. All right. So we wanted to lay out some options. We wanted to lay out where we're at with the feasibility study status. The main decision tonight is whether or not to go to a public meeting to select that locally preferred plan. The Corps, like I said, is on hold until that locally preferred plan is selected. If it does happen to be the same, what they call a best value plan, that's great. We can keep on moving forward. And then, once that plan is selected, then additional details will be coming out on that. That's really when the next round of cost estimates are done, including the value of the lands, easements, and real estate. So then, everything will then head toward the Corps' public meeting process. Ultimately, we get an approved feasibility study, and with that is most of the NEPA process would be complete. And then there's all these forks in the road. So with that, Martha, do you have any questions for John, myself, or Damon?
Any questions?
I have just a quick question on.
Yes, sir.
We looked at the operation and maintenance of Plan Two, I believe, being ultimately less than Plan One. Is there, is there a way to quantify that a little bit in terms of, I assume, the equipment, everything is essentially the same? Can you talk a little bit about the required maintenance after you, you know, after shores are, you know, dirt's moved, everything else is done? Can you talk a little bit about that ongoing maintenance?
So I haven't ran through the exact dollar difference between the administrative O and M costs between alternative one and two, so let me just be a little bit more vague. So, once we build this channel, it will be a natural channel. There's very few hard improvements being put into the channel. So that's going to minimize your long-term costs for having to maintain walls and seawalls, things that rust. There will be trash collection, that floating bandolog. And I always recommend at least monthly clean out of that. And so that's a system where you just pick it up out of the channel. It's in a cage, and you swing it over to a dump truck and dump it. And then you put it right back into its floating member in the channel. So it's relatively easy maintenance. But there will be, every month, you have to go out, you have to clean it, and then put it back in service. I don't see a lot of mowing needs with this plan, other than what you're currently doing now. You will have to try to keep some of the fallen woody vegetation out. With alternative, with the overall master plan, we'd like to put in a maintenance facility and a boat ramp to facilitate that work. With this plan, that would not yet go in. So you would have to access that from the land side. So you would have to go through a wooded area to basically chainsaw and get that log moving again. So it would be a little bit more hand labor than what you're currently seeing. The sediment difference, we're going to get the same sediment on either scenario coming through that pond. So we've all seen the Smoky Hill River during a flood, it turns chocolate. And so these gates will skim off the cleanest water off the top into a sedimentation pond and get that to drop out. So after about every two to five years, we're looking at having to dredge that material out. We do have a boat ramp to make it easy to get in there and to dredge it, haul it away, but about every two to five years. And that's going to be the same alternative one or two. All right, so in channel, the sedimentation difference, the more you dig out, the less, the longer you can go before you have to dig it out again. So there will be some fine sediments working its way through, and will tend to drop out of suspension. Also, if you put any sand and gravel during the winter on the roads, that'll make it into the channel, and eventually have to be cleaned out. The trash and urban debris eventually have to be cleaned out. So really, the only difference that it comes down to is time. How soon do you have to get back in there and do some maintenance? So by digging it out now under a cost share, that extends when the city has to go in with their own forces to do the clean out. But we're on the 25-year path, is what we're looking at. With that sedimentation pond at the headworks, it's not going to be a lot of maintenance.
Thanks.
So in general.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. It's wonderful seeing everyone.
Good to see you, too.
Just to wrap up a little bit, Mike and I have spent, what, the last several months with discussions with HDR and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Each time afterwards, we're still trying to regroup and think about what all does this mean? Because it is a lot of numbers, and it's pretty complicated to get your arms around. So I know we've given you a lot to think about, and you may have some more questions, and we'll be glad to answer those separately or independently, however you'd like to. Because it is really challenging to understand all of this. I think you got to the core of it, that alternative one would be the local, could be the locally preferred plan. It costs less, but it's not as favorable as alternative two to the Corps. So that's one thing to walk away with. Obviously, the dollars for that, it's about $1 million more to take us down the road, so that part. We have talked with HDR about the grants coming up and the KDOT funding to move forward with that. And that's a project to do some of that work, and probably a rough fee of $50,000 to $60,000, I think I've looked at. So to do the Raze Grant and to do all of the cost analysis that they asked for, so just to give you an idea. And that's not a calculated number. That was a, I'll call it kind of a rule of thumb working through it. But there is a cost to doing some of that work to get that done. And from my standpoint, I felt it was important to keep the public involved in this project, which would be a separate public meeting than the one that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers would be talking about six months down the road when they've been through their numbers. So this public meeting would include our advisory committee and bringing all of that group back together to kind of hear some of this story and the difference between the two alternatives, just to get some input. And I know it's going to be a lot to try to digest for them, so we'll try to bring that down to a level they can. But we'd like to do that around the first of December and hopefully be able to bring this back to the City Commission in mid-December and select what, we want the plan to go forward. And I'll just call it alternative one, or some combination of that, or if it's the Corps' best value plan, alternative two. And so we'll be gathering more data and information and trying to make sense of that for you. But that's where I see the path going forward. Mike, Mike and I haven't had a lot of chance to talk here in the last month. Every time we have a meeting, he plays sick.
Been a rough go. So I would concur with Martha that I was pleasantly surprised, and maybe it's because I've seen it so many times, I was pleasantly surprised how they could bring everything together and convey it to you. I think they did an excellent job of walking you through where we stand. The other thing I would underscore is, I know there's been a lot of question, a lot of just concern, I guess, about what's taking so long. One thing that probably didn't come out of this is all of the engineering and all of the conversation that's taken place to vet alternatives and put together cost estimates and put together a proposal that bears in mind the expectations of the 1135 program in terms of habitat lift. The other thing that I almost interjected at the very outset, and you Commissioners may already realize it, but part of the reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, the 1135 program is available to us is to offset some of the impacts of the bypass channel that the Corps did years ago. And so we're trying to be mindful of kind of that entire programmatic requirements, design accordingly, maximize the benefit of the 1135 program without spending money that wouldn't need to be spent otherwise. Came as a little bit of a surprise that the, the. Came as a little bit of a surprise that the plan agreements were put on hold, and we'll just have to kind of work our way through that. I think you can see from the timeline, we have an opportunity for things to fall back into sync if the hold is lifted. And I think the infrastructure bill and legislation, which is ongoing, is another thing that we're going to have to pay pretty close attention to, see if that turns into an opportunity for us to pursue. So, we've got a lot of variables in play all at the same time. We're trying to keep things moving, and then, we're going to have to make a determination here pretty quick on the locally preferred plan.
And now, your remarks have prompted a couple of further questions on my part. The first is, you'd mentioned the timeframe, and obviously, it's taken a while and it's going to continue to take a while, but referring back to the project schedule, just adding all those different month-long, you know, 12 months here, 12 to 18 months here, 24 months. What would be your best guess on when we will actually see the completion of the construction and water going through the channel? I mean, is that a four to five year?
How many guessers would you like?
I think what was shown, I heard some timeframes from Damian, where he talked about a year for construction and a year for design, which is less than what's kind of laid out in the scheme. That's somewhere in between Damian. Do you want to take that?
You could pull up that one presentation that I had, where it talked about all the different activities in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that would probably give you the best idea of when construction would be complete.
Okay.
If you go back and look at there, I think there was six months, two months, two months, 12, or 12 to 18, and then 12.
So, looking, I mean, if January of 2022 is our first deadline coming up.
Yep.
Then, and it's looking like, are these cumulative, or am I just looking at the end and saying?
They're all sequential. Yep, so then, so then you're looking at the PPA, like, I think in October.
Okay, okay.
Which we would probably prefer that to actually occur in September, in order to probably take advantage of anything that's coming out of the infrastructure bill.
Okay. So, I'm looking, if my math is right, and it rarely is, I'm looking at 52 months past January of 2022 till we're at the end of construction, so that'd be just a little over four years. Does that sound, does that sound about right? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And then, my next question is, I guess, for members of the governing body and for Mr. Schrag. Since a lot of this does depend on the infrastructure bill, what does the governing body view our role as, in terms of reaching out to let our legislators know what kind of impact the infrastructure bill could potentially have on our river project?
We've had some of those conversations. We actually have some draft correspondence to go to our congressional delegation, so I don't think it would be, I think it would be very appropriate for that to come at the governing body level.
Right. I mean, I understand that there's a lot of partisan politics that are getting played, but I also think it's important that our legislators realize what kind of an impact that this could have on our project. And so, I'm just looking at the other members. I would love to get on that correspondence sooner rather than later, but I don't know how the other members of the governing body feel about it.
I guess my question would be, do we feel like, without the infrastructure bill, these funds will not be made available in the near future?
If you mean near future being this year?
Well, next five years, four years.
I can't speculate on that, but, I mean, it's an expensive project. It would need some assistance.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if the infrastructure funding doesn't come through for whatever reason, we kind of find ourselves falling back to annual appropriation in the more typical process.
Correct.
Correct? Don't know what that might look like.
And we don't know what that's going to look like.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And back to the congressional delegation conversation, have had some conversations with staff representatives. I think some are more philosophically just opposed to funds in general, others are a little bit more pragmatic, that if the infrastructure bill ultimately comes to pass and the funds are available, then their district's best interested, try to take advantage of those funds. So I think there is some, even though you might have partisan politics, I think there is some value in trying to engage our congressional delegation.
Thank you. All right. I know that we have a lot of members of the public that are here today to speak, and I see specifically a lot of folks from Friends of the River. And, at this time, I would like to invite any of the Friends of the River staff, board members, that have comments or questions that they'd like to offer at this time. In the interest of trying to get everyone to the podium to speak if they'd like, I would just ask that you keep your remarks as short as possible, and, because we'd love to hear from you if you have something that you'd like to share with us.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Anderson, Executive Director of the Friends of the River, and I know you've been talking about all these funding opportunities, but we feel like we are also in 100% to help with funding. Not that we're going to raise $12 million, but the idea that we are a partner in this is that, you know, that we are behind the project. We know that we're short funding on trails, we are taking that very seriously, and will be, I'm saying this out of board consent, but I know that that has been our discussion over and over again, that we are looking for ways that we can add the amenities that we know that you're falling short on. So just so you know that, we feel like we are going to play a very important part in that. So, I don't know how far we'll get with that, but we know we can do pieces of it for sure. So, anyway, that's all I had to add, just to make sure that you know that we are part of this and taking it very seriously, and know that we have to play a part in this for it to be successful.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any comment or feelings philosophically or otherwise about Alternative One versus Alternative Two?
It makes sense to me, after hearing all this for years, that you would not go a cheap way in this moment. The idea that Alternative Two, I know a million dollars is a lot of money, but when you think of long-term riverways, that it would help you not have to go back into that for years because it's deeper and it's wider. And the other idea that the Corps of Engineers would look at that as a really positive step on the side of the city, that we are looking at it as an environmental riverway instead of just a place to run your boat. And their purpose for 1135 is to make it a living waterway again. It makes sense for us to take that risk, that you would go for the harder piece, but in the end would be, we would have a better chance to get the dollars from the Corps, I believe, and also that it would make it a riverway that's more successful in many ways, long-term. So, that's how I think about it. That's just my own opinion, so.
Thank you. It makes me feel good to hear that.
Good.
I can't help but think that the additional habitats and that extra investment upfront could also open up potential for additional funding resources over the years to help maintain that more so than what Alternative One would provide, but...
And I appreciate what you said, Ms. Anderson, in terms of being a partner, because a couple of the grants, the grant opportunities that I've looked at require a 501(c)(3) be the applicant as opposed to a municipal organization. So I think that there's going to be ample opportunities for us to partner up, to expand the scope of what we're able to do. Is there anyone else from Friends of the River that would like to speak? Okay. I'll open it up then to members of the general public.
Dalton McDowell, Salina, couple questions. If this is funded by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and I'm not 100% sure on this, does the Corps bring in their own contractors to do this? And then, if it would, the money the Corps sets aside for this project, if they'd have, say they have a levee breach like they did in '05 in the New Orleans District, with that money that they've set aside for this, can the U.S. government redirect that to an emergency within the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers flood control structures throughout the United States?
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell. I don't know if you want to take a swing at that, Mr. Slaughter, but if you do...
Absolutely. So, from what I understand, what you just said was about how we contract the construction portion of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the construction part of it is, we go through our normal process, and it's not that we would do it, we just, we would advertise that out, we have to go through and make a decision-making process on which method in which we're going to actually do it. Typically, for these projects, they'll go out for like a small business, 8A, just free and open. It's all a different contracting mechanism, and we make that decision as we go forward through all this feasibility processes, and that's all part of that, is how we would contract that project out. As far as, if a disaster occurs and then redirecting the funds to that, I don't have any ability to answer that question. Was there anything else part of that question you had?
No, I was just curious on the funding, if the funding would be, say, in New Orleans, like they did in '05, and they had to rebuild all their levees, if their funding was marked for here, and if you knew that you were moving.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is still in the courts about water rights in the United States. There are rulings that these water rights belong to somebody besides the United States, the white man's government. If you watch these lawsuits, law rulings, in the Western U.S., the District Circuit Court out there is ruling who these water rights belong to. So, I would get my water rights lined up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Ben Windholtz of Salina. Two observations, being a plumber of 45 and a half years, that I want to make here. One, to the Corps. You talked about during flooding of the channel, that the gates would be closed. Now, it's my understanding with the city that there are 75 neighborhood drains, storm drains, that come into this river. With no control of these neighborhoods flooding, how are we going to keep the river from flooding, even though you're just closing a gate at the channel? And the second thing I've got, and this is for the city, all of these studies and all of these numbers they put out here has no O and M, operations and maintenance. So who's going to pay for this? Who's going to keep this thing up? Basically, because it's already known that the city of Salina has a history of not taking care of their waterways. Jerry Ivy Park and the Lakewood, the shoreline of Lakewood. So how, once we have this 35 million, whatever the phase, phase, primary phase says this is going to cost us $35 million with the riverwalk and everything else, who's going to take care of it? The people that I've talked to that are behind this, as far as your special group says it's going to be taken care of by volunteers. As far as the study itself, if you do all six phases, it's a $95 million bill that we're in for. So, with that, who's going to take care of this $95 million investment? Even the primary phase of 35 million, who's going to take care of it? Because the city doesn't take care of anything now. That's why this river's in the state it's in, is because 55 years ago, the city did nothing to get us where we're at today. So anyway, I would like to get an answer from the Corps as far as what we're going to do about flooding, besides closing a gate at the spillway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Windholtz. And I do hear you about, you can add Sunset Park to our list of waterways that have some issues.
So, real quick on the flooding. So there is a pump station at the end on the dry side of the levee. So when a major flood comes, the way the levee system was designed was the, all the 75 drains interior flow into the channel, flow down to the pump station, and the gate at the downstream end's closed, and the pump station pumps the water into this old Smoky Hill River. So, that flood control effort's not going to be changed. We're not going to modify the levee, and the community along the old Smoky Hill Channel has not flooded since the levee's been built. So we will not change that flood control purpose, that flood control fight, that's going to remain the same. So we are not anticipating any additional flooding interior, once the complete project's built.
What is your pump with?
It's multiple pumps, fortunately, that we have redundancy. There is also emergency ways that we can open up the gates and get the water out, but it's been that way since the 50s, when the channel system was built, and so far, we have an excellent experience along the channel itself. So we try to take a very hard look at that. We try to look historically, how's it performed, what has changed? We also did a climate change analysis, too, to try to evaluate if that flood fight's going to look different in the future. And we've already pulled that into the alternatives and the analysis, and we have to prevent future damages from future flooding caused by the project. So, I'm comfortable with where we're going and how we're going to address that. And if you want to meet afterward, I can go into greater detail.
To the question of future O and M, and I understand this doesn't concern the Corps, but is that something that you're going to be helping us develop realistic expectations of what it's going to take yearly, every five years, every 10 years, to keep up the pieces so that we don't get behind in 25 years from now, or find ourselves in a position like we are with Jerry Ivy Park? Is that something that you're going to, and obviously, I'm not going to be a part of this conversation, but I think it would be helpful for future commissions to budget for and to have an idea about what they need to budget in order for us to take care of this resource that we're, you know, that we're making a big investment in, so.
Yeah. So the O and M side's going to show up a couple different places. One is on sustainability of the 1135 program itself. There's a detailed sediment transport model that had to be developed. Last thing we want to do is build this and instantly fill up the sediment.
Exactly.
So, that calculation of the maintenance needs at that sedimentation pond way at the beginning, that's already been determined through detailed modeling and reviewed by the sedimentation expert at the Corps. And that has already been calculated, we know volumetrically, and so, some of those O and M costs are already been developed and coming through that 1135 program. Not that the Corps will pay for it, but rather, is it a sustainable project?
Right.
The other item that we're tasked with on the city side is to develop a full-time equivalent to maintain the channel. So we've been asked to take a look at any equipment purchases, full-time equivalents as far as employees and staff to maintain the channel. And we have several reference projects that we will look at to do that. We could go to the, you know, the San Antonio Riverwalk, if you've been there, it's pristine. That's probably at the upper end. And HDR's designed multiple phases of those, and working with San Antonio River Authority, SARAH, they have very good metrics on full-time equivalents it takes to run it, so that would be at the high end. And then we have other programs that we've helped communities develop. I mentioned one in Lincoln that is, you could look at. So we'll have some metrics coming from other communities as they're maintaining theirs, and what they cost. So that is part of the HDR work elements that we have to develop.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm glad you're keeping that in mind.
Yeah, great question. Yeah, great question.
I might just add one more thing to what Eric was saying. So at the conclusion of the engineering design piece, before the project would move into construction, one of the things that we would develop with the Corps of Engineers is an O and M plan. So that's a specific document that outlines the frequency, the expectations, all those things for maintenance, so that there's no surprises when the project is handed over to the city for operations and maintenance going forward.
Thank you very much. It's nice to have that reassurance, because this could be just an absolutely transformational project for our community, and I just want to make sure that we... project for our community, and I just want to make sure that we keep it up like it, as it needs to be kept up. Any other questions from staff or any other comments from members of the public?
Bill Longbine, Salina. Follow up to Ben's question, where does this go when we're in a severe drought situation?
I will, I will look at one of the water engineers in the group.
It was the same answer.
Okay.
So yeah, we can't invent water, right? So one of the things we looked at was the frequency of shortages and when do they occur? And one of the things, if we try to flow this channel at a uniform rate year-round, we're going to have lots of shortages during the winter months. There's actually more water in the channel through the growing season than there is during the winter months. And part of it is they're basically refilling Canopla Dam over the winter. So when we take a look at if we flow at a faster rate during the growing season, when there is water available, and then we cut it back to just ten CFS over the winter months, we see we're going to be in that range of around ninety percent reliability. In addition, in Canopla's, we have the opportunity to do a water assurance and purchase additional water. And that water can be used to feed into the system to create more flows. So that would be a recreational water right that would be secured, in addition to the water rights that have already been obtained for this project directly. And then also, Canopla's Dam has an environmental release goal, and so during times of drought, there is a minimum flow that is released into the Smoky Hill River. And we'd like for that to go into the Old Smoky Hill River as part of our restoration effort. And so we're working through the program to make sure that comes also into the channel. So we have three different ways that we talked about. One is water management, take the water when it's available, work with the natural ebb and flow of the river system. Two, the water assurance district, and then also the environmental releases. So we took a good, hard look. Now, severe drought is a severe drought. This will be a natural system, so at times, water will go down. I'm not going to say it's always going to be wet, but quite frankly, if the farmers are struggling, there is no water out there, I guess I wouldn't feel good about a flowing channel system through the community if the community is struggling. So it will be a natural system that will ebb and flow as the natural environment does. But it will be rare to see it dry. So hopefully that answers.
So ninety percent reliability is ninety percent of the time, we think there will be flowable.
If we add the water assurance, we get up to ninety-nine point nine percent with the water assurance.
Okay.
So very, very rare, yeah.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have questions or comments? And I will look online. Are there any members of the public that are here virtually who would like to raise their hand and speak? I don't see any. So thank you very much to HDR, Core, to staff for being here today and giving such an informative presentation, and it's a really exciting project, and look forward to next step. So thank you very much, and we will reconvene for the regular meeting at four o'clock. Thanks. Good to go? All right. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Salina City Commission for November first, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to first confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Would all who are able please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will take us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to speak or ask questions of the city commission. I'd ask that you identify yourselves by your first and last name, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And with that, I'll open up Citizens Forum. If there are any members of the public here who would like to speak, now's your chance.
Norman Mano, Salina, Kansas. About a year ago, you enacted a resolution to remove plastic sacks from our stores. You haven't done it yet. When are we going to enforce that plastic ban?
We never.
I don't think we.
It was discussed, there was never any action taken on that.
Yeah.
You sure, Mike?
I'm getting old, I forget stuff, but I don't think I forgot that, Norman.
Okay. I mean, I mean, within us enact the ban, we're having trouble with this plastic blowing all over the city. Is it feedback from the retailers? Why can't we do it?
You know, one suggestion that made was perhaps the Solid Waste Committee might expand its role and just do some of the heavy lifting as far as vetting, you know, options and plans, but Kroger, I believe, is going to, thus they've changed their national plan.
Yeah, I haven't heard lately, but it was in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two or twenty-three. Kroger is going to go twenty-four?
Five.
Twenty-five, they moved it back. They had more of a stockpile of plastic bags than they thought. But, you know, some, that part of the market is going to shift its practice somewhere down the road, anyway, that doesn't preclude us from moving.
One other thing I was asked at about three meetings ago, how to fill an appointment without having controversy? You know, you point people to a committee. Every person that fills out a form of interest, assign a number to this form and put it in the pill bottle. Every form is filled out. You'll get to look at it, you'll get to see who it is. But you're not going to get to pick your candidate, your person that you want to put in this position. We need to take the humans out of it. No controversy would be made. You can do that. So in the future, when you need to make an appointment, we need to take political favoritism and everything out of it. Any controversy, you can do this.
And I would like to remind folks that are watching at home, and to you, Mr. Mano, a lot of the times, we, there's really no choice to be made. We are really lacking applicants for our boards and commissions, so I would encourage people to apply because it's, the board that we actually have, the ability to make a selection is the exception rather than the rule.
You'll have more applicants because they'll know that if they apply, they have a better chance of being appointed.
Thank you.
Dalton McDowell, Salina. Have you guys ever thought about term limits? Because there's at least four commissioners that have been on here forever, one's decided to retire. I think we need term limits on our local. We're looking, they are looking in Congress to do term limits at the congressional level in the US government. I think we need term limits on local because you guys waste a bunch of money to, and you give contracts and everything else to your buddies, and that's ridiculous. And how long has Greg Binkston been in your guys' attorney? And how much money are you guys wasting suing somebody to get something off the, off the, well, they vote on it tomorrow. So are you going to drop the case if the citizens of the city of Salina have had enough with the city commission and voted yes for this new ordinance to limit the power?
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? All right, we'll turn to the virtual realm. Is there anyone online who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? If so, raise your hand and we will unmute you. All right. Well, we'll close Citizens Forum, and we will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item five point one, conduct required public hearing at conclusion of community development block grant coronavirus grant process.
And I'll take that one. Ms. Driscoll's not here today, and Margie Clem is here to support me in providing this report. Commissioners, I'm sure you recall that we received coronavirus additional funding from the community development block grant program as part of the coronavirus allocations, and we went through a CDBG program both for business grants as well as Meals on Wheels or meal funding. We've gone through that entire process in terms of receiving applications, awarding those grants, administering those grants. In fact, we went so far as to conduct the required public hearing for closing out that grant process, and we did that with the assistance of a grant administrator through North Central Regional Planning Commission. Subsequently then, the Kansas Department of Commerce advised that they wanted the public hearing for the business side of the applications, the CDBG CV applications, for that public hearing to be conducted separately and distinctly. So an advertised notice has been published for today, so the intent of this action item is for you to open that public hearing, conduct the public hearing, take any public comment that you might receive. Staff would then compile all that, share that with the Department of Commerce as the final step in closing out this grant procedure. The grants have been awarded, the funds have been distributed and spent, and we've confirmed compliance. This is the final action step to close out this grant with the Department of Commerce.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? All right, then we'll go ahead and we will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about the community development block grant under discussion today? Well, that's got to be one of our shorter public hearings. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the governing body for action. Or do we don't? Do we don't need, we don't have to officially close it or anything?
Well, you need to close it, but I don't know that you need to take a vote.
Okay, all right. Well, then we're going to consider the public hearing closed, and we will move on to the next item of business.
Item five point two, SFC Global Supply Chain, Inc., five point two A, public hearing regarding issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for SFC in the approximate principal amount of six hundred million dollars. Five point two B, resolution number two one dash seven nine nine nine, determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds and entering into a performance agreement with SFC.
Thank you. Ms. Peck?
I'll take this one as well. I appreciate Ms. Peck helping put this packet together while I was out, or this agenda item together while I was out last week. This relates to the Schwan's project and issuance of industrial revenue bonds for that project. It's two step, two action items for you today. One, to conduct a public hearing, open and close that public hearing, and then consideration of the resolution determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds. And so the, the terms of the industrial revenue bonds and the performance agreement have been an ongoing conversation with Schwan's since the time that you took initial action indicating your support of proceeding in this manner. With the help of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and Sarah Steele, who's on the line from Gilmore and Bell, we prepared the attached performance agreement, negotiated it with Schwan's and prepared the attached performance agreement. You may recall, we refer to these as kind of issue-your-own-bond type industrial revenue bonds. It's not an actual bond issuance that the city would initiate and have liability for. It is a, an arrangement whereby tax, sales tax exemption and property tax exemption that might not otherwise be available through machinery and equipment exemptions that are already in place can be extended to the project. There's summary information there in terms of the principal amount being $600 million. You may have noticed in the performance agreement, it provides for Phase 1 and then it contemplates a Phase 2, subject to review and approval of what's referred to as the issuer, which would be the city of Salina. And so the initial issuance, I want to make sure I'm quoting the right number to you. But the initial phase, I believe, is in a $300 million range. And then the remainder would be subject to additional review and approval at a later date. So essentially, they have to come back to you for, the governing body for additional review and approval. I know there were questions, well, one thing that we certainly did want to note as part of the staff report is the performance agreement indicates the company agrees to retain 1,101 full-time jobs within the existing facility. And had quite a bit of conversation with representatives of Schwan's about their current employment levels and what that might look like. And so it's really kind of broken into two parts. One is maintaining 825 full-time employees. The other is agreeing to add, to seek employment of additional employees up to that 1,101 number. Schwan's refers to that as requisitioned positions, but it's kind of a recognition of their struggle that they're having in terms of filling positions. So 825 is the bottom end of what they would physically employ. And then they would make an ongoing effort to advertise and hire up to that 1,101 number as the base. And then additionally, the agreement provides for the additional job creation that was initially discussed, 42 in year one and 183 in year three. And then I know there were questions raised about the fiscal impact of the incentives. There is a cost benefit analysis that's conducted as part of this process. And I will refer to Mitch Robinson with the SEEDO to walk you through the cost benefit analysis that was, was conducted. There was some conversation about corrections to numbers, specific numbers. I'll ask him to walk you through that as well. And then between him, myself, and Sarah Steele, we can try to answer any questions that you might have as it relates to the cost benefit analysis and the action item.
And is this the revised, this is.
Correct.
We have revised information from WSU.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
At our podium. And so for members of the public, I'm sure that this will get posted. All right, Mr. Robinson.
It's good to be back with you all again. This is a project that, of course, was announced in August of 2019. And now we're here to move this step forward on the, on the process. So as the city manager said, you know, the key, key points were the, the current jobs that are in place at Schwan's. And then the expansion numbers due to the two new lines that are gonna be constructed at the plant. So those two machines will require additional 42 employees and then additional 183 that Mike had mentioned. These are gonna be higher paying jobs than the current positions. So we're excited about those coming, coming online. But the investments the company's making, the items that were, we did make some revisions. And part of this was putting in the state of Kansas Department of Commerce numbers into the proposal, into, let's see. It's, there are just so many numbers here, it's kind of hard to get through them all. But the benefit cost ratio, we're in that 1.25, 1.3 range. And there's different, you can see on pages, it's, it's this chart here. We get into seeing some of the charts and the numbers that show where, where the benefit ratios are. So you've got, I can remember stating this early on with some of the previous projects. The first couple of years are the tough years in terms of where you are with the ratio. And then it goes up to, to, to have a better scoring ratio. I'm just gonna flip, flip through here. Page nine is, we get into some of the, the investment numbers. The building investment, the equipment investment, those were split up by the company. You know, this was.
So I'm.
Yes.
So.
Probably easiest if I would just try and answer.
No, 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 I was just, no, I was just gonna ask if you could, I mean, so the, the new numbers versus what we had received so far.
Right.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to keep up, so.
Okay. Kind of the scoreboard here.
Right.
So the only number that has really changed is, is originally, we were under, working with the state, the 1,200, 1,200 existing employees.
Right.
That is the current number of positions, not actual jobs employed, people employed.
Right.
But they have 1,200 positions at the plant. So that number has come down to the 1101 that Mike mentioned.
Right, plus the, the new, which brings us to 1326 versus the 1425 that was before.
That's the major difference.
Sorry to interrupt, but if I may add, it's my understanding that that, that transition from 1,200 to 1101 was agreed to at the state level on all their programs.
Right.
So Schwan's was pretty adamant that they wanted to carry through the same number across the state program and the, and the city's IRB issuance.
For some reason, we were copied four or five different proposals from the state, but that number was never corrected in the copies that we received. So it was more of a negotiation between the state and, and the company.
So the difference between the positions and their full-time employees is the number that currently they would hire if they could find those employees?
Correct. They've, the conversations I've had with them and by way of the performance agreement, they have an ongoing willingness to hire that many. They just have not been successful in doing that.
So just, because I'm even looking at the numbers and listening to the discussion. Yeah, I'm getting confused. I think, but your, your question helped me out a lot, Commissioner Hoppick. So they have 1,200 positions available.
Correct.
And currently, they have 1,100 people working or 825 people working?
The 825.
Actually, I don't know that I'm prepared to say 825. 825 is the floor number that they agreed to as by way, by way of this agreement. I think they probably have a little bit more than that. And I don't know if we've got a representative of Schwan's on the line.
Because when it says in Section 3.4, the company agrees to retain its 1,101 full-time employees, does that mean 1,101 employees, let's say they have now minus, I'm assuming, natural attrition, people moving away, getting married or whatever. So what, what number, what's the significance of the 1101? Because obviously, if they can go down to 825, the 1101 looks like window dressing to me.
Mike, let me, the, the discussions they had with the state of Kansas Department of Commerce, that was the number they were negotiating from, from the 1101 number. So that's.
As the minimum number of.
That's what they based their proposal on.
As the minimum number of people working? I mean, let's just say everybody gets sick or everybody wants to move to California and they're down to 700 employees. Do they then, what, hold that amount of salary that would have been used for those in a certain part? I'm, I'm not sure, you know, if they go below 825, kind of, so what happens?
What's the penalty, I guess?
What's the green and science?
So, and I'll invite Sarah Steele to interrupt me if I get any of this wrong. But the section that you referred to, Commissioner Davis, Section 3.4, actually is a little bit more complex than, than initially described. It says, "The company agrees to retain 1,101 full-time employees." Full-time employees means hourly and salaried full-time equivalent positions of current employees plus approved positions for which the company is actively seeking employees. So there, they, they will not dial back and say, "Our, our employment goal is 900." Their employment goal remains 1,101 at a minimum, provided, however, that the total number of current employees will not be less than 825. So they would need to have physically 825 employees and actively trying to fill 1,101 positions to meet the baseline expectations. Then on top of that is the commitment to the added jobs in year one and year three.
So what, I mean, can't force 825 people to come to work. I mean, if they're only 700.
Right, then they're.
Then what?
They're in default of the agreement and they're not eligible for the property tax abatements made available by the IRB program.
So the 825 are live buddies who could pass a scanner going into work every day.
Correct.
Not positioned, just like our, you know, police department for years, we had.
Yeah, we had authorized positions.
Authorized positions, but then the number of officers in uniform.
That's a pretty good characterization. The, I would add to that, if you use our authorized positions analogy, this agrees that you're not gonna arbitrarily at some point lop off a portion of those authorized positions and lower that number. You continue to try to fill to that authorized level.
If I could just follow, just follow up on that super quick because it was a question I had and I think it's relevant to what you just said. In terms of like, we had an unsatisfactory agreement with Phillips years ago where the city gave them, I think it was $900,000, and they were going to grow by like 20 some positions. And then what they ended up doing is eliminating the, the equivalent number of positions from another division. Do we have, and I didn't see any safeguards within the contract that, you know, we can't play that same kind of semantic game. Oh, well, we still have that number of positions in our company. We've just switched it to our Kentucky plant or something. You know, you know.
Sure.
I mean, that was something that had occurred to me too, about that whole division shifting.
If I may, I'd like to call in Sarah Steele. I think she can speak to that as well or better than I can.
All right, Ms. Steele, go ahead. I think you're unmuted.
Thank you. Sarah Steele, Gilmore and Bell, we're bond counsel to the city. And the agreements provide that there be a minimum existing and continuing number of employees of 1101, as Mr. Skreg mentioned. And, and the, if they're, if they fail to meet that, then they would lose the benefits that they currently have. And I apologize, Mayor Hodges. I was looking at the cost benefit and I'm not answering your question. Would you please ask again?
Oh.
I think that was it. The question was if they failed to meet the requirements of the agreement, number one, is the agreement sufficiently drafted in such a way that it's enforceable? And then what would the consequences be, I think?
Right, in terms of.
And, and so for purposes of the agreement, there is that minimum number that they have to attempt to achieve actively seeking the employees. And, and that has to be within the facilities in Salina.
Okay.
They may be able to move them within divisions.
Right. But in terms of they're being shifted to other positions within the organization and other communities.
No.
It's, it's specific to the Salina location.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, I think I interrupted you in the middle of your.
One, and it's about the average annual wages. You know, very often, people are enticed by jobs because they'll hear, well, this is what you could make if you really hustle and get overtime and bonuses and stuff. And when I ask, well, what's, how much do I know I'm coming home with every two weeks? If I just want to be a good employee, work my 40 hours and be done with it.
Normal, straight time.
Right. To what extent are the average wages that we see in this little chart on page four inflated over the actual base salary? If a person worked no overtime and, and just worked their 40 hours a week?
I'd have to get back to you to give you an accurate answer. I wouldn't feel comfortable in making a guess.
Okay.
And, and a follow-up to that too would be, and I think I've asked for it in the past in terms of how are these positions broken down? Like, what's the split between, say, a floor worker that's making $45,000 a year versus an executive that might be making $250,000 or $300,000 a year? Because if you have like, you know, three top-level executives, that can really skew what that average annual wage is. Whereas if we know how many positions are within given ranges, you know, whether that looks like, you know, 40 to 50, you know, 50 to 75. I mean, however, it logically breaks down. But I'm always a little leery when we get that, that the, the average annual wage is going to be so high because we don't know, we, we don't have enough facts to, to understand how many people that's actually going to impact.
Sorry. I'll start that over. I understand the concern and I think this has been the nomenclature that we've been using from the outset with our conversations with Schwan's and our conversations with the governing body about average wages and, and, you know, how this was, was structured. And I would acknowledge that you'll have executives that make a higher wage, but especially with an employer like Schwan's with the hundreds that we're talking about. I think that, that skewing is probably less than it might be in a smaller 50, say 50.
Right, I get that, but we don't know. I mean.
And that question takes me back to a fifth or sixth grade class. Had we spent a whole hour being told to fear the word average. They said, "Always ask for a mean, mode, or a meeting." If you really want to find out what that number means. And I, and I think, just referring to the same, what is the real breakdown of those, of those jobs as far as the spread of income?
Sure. And I understand, I, I just have to be honest, from staff's perspective, I didn't pick up on that directive at the outset, so I haven't negotiated this performance agreement with that in mind. I negotiated it somewhere to how we started this conversation.
And I think it helps us as a community plan if, I'll use some extreme examples. If three of the 42 make $5 million a year and the other 39 only make $29,000 a year, then we know we're gonna need a lot more community supports as far as school, lunch program, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. I'm sorry, any, any other questions for Mr. Robinson?
And I, I can't remember because I don't have my old worksheets with me. But I thought we had a little bit more of that detail because I thought we had this conversation a year ago.
I agree.
I mean, I, because I think that same concern was brought up, that we didn't want, you know, some executives skewing that. And I think at one point, we, we felt comfortable with the numbers they had given us because of the, they stratified a little bit more of what their.
Great Plains did lay that out and it was, and they stratified it. I don't know whether, I just can't remember right now if.
I can go back and check my records as well.
I remember seeing information like that.
I mean, it's hard for me to believe that this discussion hadn't already happened because I know it's always been, it's been on our minds all along that we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, not bringing people in at a, at a wage that was gonna require community support because it wasn't a working wage, so.
These positions are always gonna be higher than the existing plan.
I think we've, I don't have my worksheets in front of me, but I believe we've. I think we've, I don't have my worksheets in front of me, but I believe we've had this discussion before.
And I think that that would be something that as we move forward, obviously, you know, I'm not gonna be here, but it might be helpful for future commissioners to have, to be able to have that information, you know, in front of them so that they can speak knowledgeably about, you know, what kind of an opportunity it is and how we're justifying our, you know, foregoing tax dollars to support those positions. And I think it was Great Plains that did offer us at one point early in the process of their application, not sure if it was in open session or if it was in executive session, but they did at least break it down. And I believe Superior did as well. So I guess my question, a follow-up question I have as well is, I feel like we've expected different things from different applicants and like, the contract that we have with Great Plains doesn't look like the contract that we have with Superior, that doesn't look like the contract with Schwanns. So do we generate those contracts or does the applicant, or how, who prepares those?
We prepare them as a negotiation with the applicant. And so some of it is in response to the project specifics, some of that is in response to, in the negotiation, the conversation that goes on with the representatives of the project. We do try to consistently have clearly communicated requirements and consequences and, you know, as you know, you've negotiated from the DIES, the percentage allocations that it might be granted to a project. So we try to take that into account. But part of it is a function of the project itself, the capital investment, the employment, the, you know, what projects being proposed and what commitments they're willing to make.
And I would love to see it at least somewhat more standardized, even if you're leaving a section blank that, or acknowledging that, you know, the applicant did not want to participate in that. Because like, we're expecting, we're making requirements of Schwanns that say, like, we didn't make from Great Plains and vice versa. And I don't know, I would like to see some sort of consistency of expectations so that we can apply that to every applicant that, you know, that's wanting these economic incentives. And so I guess, so is that Gilmore and Bell question? Is that something that we do?
It's a combination of Gilmore and Bell and staff. And I understand the concern, but I'm not prepared to say that we're making different requirements of Schwanns than we are of Great Plains. We, both of those agreements provided for employment levels, provided consequences for failing to meet the employment levels. They may have been at different levels of detail. Each one of them had an opinion about how it is they, what their numbers might be and how they could report their employment levels to us, but...
But, and we, have we specifically adopted an IRB policy, though, at this point?
Nothing unique since it's been in place for quite some time. And it's very basic in terms of when you're eligible for an IRB and it provides broad discretion to the governing body.
Right. I just, my concern is, if you're, you know, a member of the public watching these proceedings, it can seem kind of arbitrary about how we make our decisions. And it would be, I think it would be helpful to have some consistent...
I think it's hard to set up a matrix that's gonna fit every situation. I mean, as we've looked at three or four this year, everything's a little bit different. And I think whether it's this commission or commissions to come, I think there has to be a certain amount of flexibility, mainly when you're negotiating whether it's the EDO or whatever. These are called negotiations for a reason. We don't have a boilerplate handout we hand to them and say, "Here's what we require." And I think we have to leave it up to whether it's bond counsel, our legal counsel, staff and all that to negotiate part of that. And we try to negotiate what we think's best for the city. And I just think it'd be awful hard to come up with a standard matrix to do on all projects. I mean, you can maybe have an outline, but I think it'd have to be pretty loosely written to give us the opportunity to negotiate the deals.
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that the more consistently that we can apply the same decision-making processes to different projects, the more transparent our processes become and the more we have the public's buy-in. That's not a conversation for today. I get that. But we're sitting here today with $628 million worth of IRBs on the three proposals and I, you know, I think it's probably worth a conversation at some point in the future.
Mayor, I will comment. We are having some discussions internally with the SE EDO board about that very issue of trying to come up with a matrix. But I'm, like Commissioner Hoppick, it'll be, I'll say, pretty loosely structured or there is some flexibility. But we have, I've looked at Wichita's, there are several other communities have modified there. And Sarah has been able to provide me some of that information in terms of what communities are doing things a little bit more updated than our policy from the 80s and 90s.
That would be, I mean, I think a wonderful use of the EDO's skills and talents and research to be a good partner, to help ensure that we are making consistent decisions. Because I know that's what you want, too.
Most definitely.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I don't know if it's a question. I guess it's gonna be more of a comment. I think we're, I was a little concerned about the Section 3.4 and some of the employment. But again, I believe Schwanns is probably running into some of the same issues that other employers are as far as filling positions. And again, we've talked about this quite a bit and that's housing. Again, another deal, you know, daycare that we need to not be in charge of, but that discussion needs to happen within the community. And I think all those discussions need to go on with the employers to see how we're gonna bring in a qualified workforce. Because I think we're not unique to this problem, but I think we need to get ahead of the curve and start working with everyone to try to get the word out that we have started addressing some of the housing so we can get some employees in here, so...
Yeah. And back to that 825 number. When we see that historically Schwann's high employee, employment mark was 1,850 and now we're talking about the potential, we're already 700 and some down and now we're talking about the potential to go down a full 1,000 employees. You know, it's, I'm glad that we were able to put together a package that has encouraged them to stay in the community, but it's a little disingenuous to talk about, you know, new jobs in the community when in point of fact, we've lost 700 and 700 and we could be losing another, we could go down as much as another 300. So, you know, glad to have them in the community, but it is something to keep in mind that I think I was hoping to see more of an expansion as opposed to what we're having when you take it in the historical context.
And I think some of those new jobs, if you remember, are higher paying because they're a little more technical than what they have been. So I think it's a, some of the new jobs coming in are better paying because they do require more training than what some of the current jobs are. And again, this, I'm guessing, I've never made pizzas before except at home, but I'm guessing that, you know, technology has, you know, we see a lot of our businesses now because of modern technology, you have the same amount of production, but you have less employees. And I think we saw that out at Phillips when they were here, too, so...
Right.
And if it's helpful, they've made a sizable investment in building, construction and equipment, which I think we are seeing the benefits financially for the community in terms of sales tax generation in the short run as far as their construction projects underway.
And final question for me. In terms of the fiscal impact, is there any way that we can put together, I mean, obviously there's a fiscal impact of the tax revenues that we're foregoing. Is there any way to be able to apply that? I understand it might not be possible for this project today, but in the future, there's got to be some method to calculate what that actual value is? Or does it, maybe I missed it in the WSU analysis?
I think it's probably a combination of two things. Tolding some of the numbers in the WSU study. And the other variable is making sure that we're accounting for the machinery and equipment exemption that's already in place.
Absolutely.
That with or without IRBs they would realize. But I think we could quantify that as, and here it's broken out by taxing entity. If we factored in the machinery and equipment, we could run a total.
Yeah, I just think it would be nice, as a fiscal note, to know what we're foregoing in property.
I was actually working, doing those numbers by hand.
Thank you.
Since we don't have, our cell phones with calculators. But if you were just looking at just what the exemptions and abatements provide just for new job creation, this wouldn't be terribly cost efficient. It would be $46,700 per new job per year for 10 years. But if you look at the jobs we've retained over that 10-year period, it's only, I say only, but $6,920 per employee per year for those 10 years to retain those jobs.
Boiling it all down, the point of the cost-benefit analysis and that one, you know, indicator is a result greater than one indicates that accounting for all of the abatement or all the incentives, whether the, if the number exceeds one, then that means the community's still realizing more benefit and is giving in the way of incentives. And that's the case on this analysis.
Yeah. And I will say, the analysis was based on, what, 1,300 and some change in terms of jobs? And it probably would have been, and it would have been an interesting exercise to run it on 825 as well and see what the spread would be. That's all I've got. Anyone else? And if not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on the issuance of the IRBs for Schwann's global food chain. I have a hard time spitting that all out. Now's your opportunity to ask questions or address the commission.
Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas. As you said, Mike, we're getting old. We've got grandkids. What we're doing, we are ruining our children's heritage. By creating these jobs, we are creating global warming. The world is meeting on this issue in Scotland. Don't look at the short-term gains. Look what we're doing to our grandkids. My grandkid, my granddaughter is gonna come up to me and say, "Grandpa, why did you let this happen?"
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And do we have any members of the public online who would like to offer comments at the public hearing?
Mayor Hodges, Sarah Steele again. I may just add that we do have counsel online for the meeting. Joe Serrano is representing SFC Global and advises that apparently the Schwanns folks are having a difficult time getting in to Zoom on the meeting. And so I just wanted to mention that factor as well.
I see Mr. Serrano's name up there. And if he's, if he would like to offer any comments, he's welcome to raise his hand. If there are Schwanns representatives that are not able to get in, we could, I'm really not sure at this point what options are open to us.
I don't know, maybe Mr. Serrano can relay the message.
Yeah. But Mr. Serrano, I think you've been unmuted if you'd like to speak.
Sure, thank you. And I apologize. This is Joe Serrano, Kutech Rock in Kansas City. I've been trying to get my client to, in this call, to answer some of those employment questions that have been raised. The only comment that I, I guess, Chris Wiseman is local. The person I was trying to get on the line is Jeff Thompson. I think he's been down to meet with members of the city to answer the question. He said he was having difficulties getting connected. For some reason, he's running to his office right now. He said, I can read the email that you typed to me, but it's, what has been echoed prior, which is the employment number of 1,101 reflect the same number that was submitted as part of the state's application for the incentive, its job trade fund and peak application, which were completed and submitted in Q1 of 2021. For consistency purposes, we have a line on that number for all incentive applications. I could tell you, in context of the discussion of the 825 and the 1,101 employees, I had a brief conversation about that in trying to discuss this with Sarah, Ms. Steele. It is, it is that floor of 825. There's not any kind of gamesmanship trying to reduce that amount. It really is a factor the labor is generating that discussion. They are actively seeking to fulfill those positions. But in terms of the wage amount, I would have to go back and visit with them further because we did not have it associated with the wage requirement other than the average annual wage is definitely what we have submitted for the state, for the state incentive application. So I don't know, I haven't answered questions. I'm hopeful that Mr. Thompson can speak to us, but he's having a little bit of difficult times. But I'm happy to answer any questions if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Any questions for him? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
My pleasure.
If Mr. Thompson becomes available while we're still on this item, he can join us at that point. All right, so we have a resolution number 21-7999.
Need to close the public...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to, oh, but I, as part of the public hearing, I did receive an email from John Blanchard and he would like this entered into the public record as his comments. So I have an email that I will provide to the clerk. So with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. I don't know if there's any further information staff would like to include about that, but this would just be the action going ahead and determining the advisability of issuing the industrial revenue bonds and entering into a performance agreement with SFC.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 21-7999, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds and authorizing the execution of related documents.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7999. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. The question I have is actually for Ms. Steele, if she can hear me.
Yes.
Ms. Steele, we just had reference to comments by a citizen that were to be included in the record. It just, I didn't know if you were able to hear that or had opportunity to process whether the fact that those, I don't believe have been available to all of the commissioners? Am I correct?
I forwarded them to the commissioners after I received the email this morning, but I don't have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have any guarantee that the commissioners had a chance to read them.
Okay. Well, that was my only concern, was whether, obviously, Ms. Steele's judgment of whether there's any concern as to the public hearing in relation to the resolution is affected by that. But I assume the fact that you forwarded it to the other commissioners is a key factor. So I apologize for the interruption, but I...
No, I just thought I should if they were public comment, or if they were...
Oh, right.
For a public hearing, that that would be the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, no, I think that was, that was the concern I had, that if you hadn't and they had not had opportunity to consider that, that was the only concern I had. So it sounds like, depending on... So it sounds like depending on Ms. Steele's thought that that would address the matter.
I would agree with Mr. Bankston that as long as you shared those with the entire commission, that, that satisfies the communication. I frankly, in over 20 years of experience, have never received written comments for a public hearing. So Mayor, you are the first.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Steele. It's exciting to be a trailblazer. So we do...
Is it an issue at all? I mean, I just came late. I guess I didn't even see that email. So I appreciate Mayor forwarding it on, but does it matter at all whether we actually saw it or not?
That would be a question for Ms. Steele, I think. And that was just the type of detail I, I didn't want to jeopardize the public hearing by not checking.
I mean, if it's just commentary, then I'm fine with it being in the record.
And is it, it's not necessary to, or let me ask you as a question. Is it necessary to read that document into the record?
Out of an abundance of caution, if the document is not too lengthy, that may be preferable to just having it in writing submitted to the city clerk.
I'm, I'm showing it and, I mean, it's, it's a page. I'll do whatever the commission wants me to do.
Ms. Steele, if, if we're going to do that, do we need to reopen the public hearing and then read it in the record?
Yes, yes, Mr. Scrag. It does need to be done in the public hearing. The public hearing is, is a statutory requirement, and you do need to permit all members of the public who wish to speak the ability to speak. So therefore, if it's not too much trouble, if you would read those into the record, I think that would be ideal.
As our parliamentarian, Mr. Bankston, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So how do we proceed from this point forward?
The, I think Mayor with the, and I'll again make sure that Ms. Steele has an opportunity to hear and correct me if she thinks otherwise. But I would expect that with the main motion on the floor, with the consent of your fellow commissioners, you could certainly reopen the public hearing for the purpose of reading in the, in the written comment. Upon the conclusion of that reading, close the public hearing, and then your main motion will still be on the floor and subject to consideration.
All right. Bearing that in mind, is it, is, does the commission approve with reading this into the public record?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mayor Hodges, many questions?
Just to be clear, we need to reopen the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're getting quite bogged down here. All right, we're officially reopening the public hearing in order to read comments into the record that were received and forwarded to the city commission regarding this item. Mayor Hodges, many questions. Here are a few. The fiscal note does not provide a dollar amount to the incentive. I don't believe the public is on board with the idea of signing blank checks. Providing an actual estimated amount would help provide transparency, especially since existing Salina taxpayers are being asked to pick up the slack. How do we reconcile the projections that Schwann's and Great Plains will be adding 325 jobs over the next three to five years and having actual job losses that signify and REV totaling 490 in the past two years? Also, is there any concern that over the past three years, Schwann's has had job losses of 600, 600 employees alone? Does anyone think that One Vision Aviation will ever eclipse Raytheon? And exactly how many employees does One Vision Aviation have versus contract employees who don't and never will move to Salina? Also, the lease arrangement with One Vision was based on employment, so what is the current lease arrangement? Please see attachments from the 2017 to 2020 City of Salina audits of largest employers. Why are there retention requirements for SFC Global regarding existing employees and there were none for GPM? I think there should be for all, but this doesn't seem fair to SFC Global. Also, the 825 floor employment requirement is unclear. FYI, page four, section three of the PA was missing from the online packet, so that may answer that, but clarification would be helpful. As far as the average annual wage of the new jobs, 65,210, really? Ditto for GPM and One Vision. What are the pay ranges and how are they distributed? What is the latest tally of conduit debt in parentheses, IRB? The 2015 audit was the last time this was provided, which was $51.3 million. Note 4E, long-term debt. I support issuance of the IRBs for these purposes. My concerns are mostly, one, the amount of abatements and the extra burden that is being requested of existing taxpayers, and two, whether the projections of job growth are optimistic and deserve closer scrutiny now that the numbers are more realistic. And three, is it time to take a look at the 2021 revisions to the housing study and a recalibration based on the projections and losses of jobs over the last three years? And sign, John. I will likely be unable to attend the meeting. Thank you for your consideration. Please share with your fellow commissioners as you see fit. John Blanchard. I did confirm that he would not be able to be here, and he did want that read into the public record. So that's that document. I will provide that to the county clerk. And we will again close the public hearing. And we have an action item on the table to approve Resolution 21-7999. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Which takes us finally to our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 25, 2021. And item 6.2, board appointments.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading of ordinance number 21-11086, authorizing the City of Salina, Kansas to issue its industrial revenue bonds, a Series 2021 Great Plains project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Ordinance number 21-11086 was passed on first reading on October 25, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from members of the public? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11086 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11086 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading of ordinance number 21-11089, authorizing the City of Salina, Kansas to issue its industrial revenue bonds, Series 2021 Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services Company, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,308,145.55 for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation and equipping of a manufacturing and commercial facility and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Ordinance number 21-11089 was passed on first reading on October 25, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11089 on second reading.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11089 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, second reading of ordinance number 21-11091, establishing specific reserve funds as recommended during the 2022 strategic planning and budget sessions.
All right. Ordinance number 21-11091 was passed on first reading on October 25, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 21-11091 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11091 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes 5-0. We don't have any development business. Is there, are there any items under other business that a commissioner would like to bring up?
Encourage the public to go and vote tomorrow.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Took the words right out of my mouth. Remember to vote tomorrow. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And if you're not sure where to vote, I believe that you can get on the county clerk's website and find your polling place. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes 5-0.